Because our kids need that kind of support. Number two is to our teachers and our principals and administrators, the folks that make these classrooms work every single day. I know today may seem confusing or concerning, but we still are proud of the work that you're doing across the city of Fort Worth. And I'm still reminded of the campuses that have seen tremendous increase in accountability scores, schools like Mary Lee's Phillips Elementary School that I've talked about before, Cesar Chavez Elementary School. And by the way, on Friday, I'm going to a parade to celebrate Christine Moss Elementary School that went from a failing grade to an A just in the last year. These are the celebrations we need to have of positive results. But the reality is, we still have 20 campuses across the city in Fort Worth ISD that are failing. And we can all do better, and it's going to take a tremendous amount of focus. So while I think there are a lot of unanswered questions today, that's natural in this process, I want Fort Worth to be a great example of a community that rallies together, to focus on our students, and importantly, think about what the next steps look like over the next few months as they go through that board of manager process, and importantly, who ultimately becomes the superintendent of schools of Fort Worth ISD. At this point, I'm happy to take questions.
Have you talked to Dr. Molinar and her reaction? How's she feeling?
I have. I think she is, she's a professional, first of all. She anticipated this happening. I think she's probably a bit in flux right now, meaning she knows how much she has poured into this district over 20 years of service to Fort Worth ISD. And in a very short period of time, really just a year, think about the difference that she's made in refocusing the district where needed to be. She's not done yet. I think she still has her heart in the district and wants to continue to be the superintendent. And she is our superintendent today, and she will remain to be there in that position. But I think she's also thankful for the outpouring of support, text messages and phone calls she's received to say, thank you, we love you, we're right behind you, and to be supportive. But she's also, again, she's a professional, and her head's in the game to focus on what these students and her teachers need every single day, and that will be her job. Let's be honest, it will not be easy, right? You're going to have the current board of trustees there to serve. You've got teachers concerned, you've got students and parents, you've got applications for board of managers, you've got Commissioner Morath, the conservator. There's a lot for her to take on as the leader of the district right now.
What do you think is the likelihood that she will remain as superintendent?
I'm not a good gambler. I do not know. All I can tell you is that the data will likely inform what Mike Morath decides to do here. It'll be a robust process that he'll undertake to interview different leaders that are capable of being a turnaround superintendent. I know I've personally expressed my interest in Dr. Molinar staying in her position, but I also recognize he sees it from a different perspective as the TEA Commissioner for the entire state of Texas. And he's seen success in other districts, most notably Houston ISD, where he's brought in someone else. Of course, Mike Miles had had a long-established tenure as a superintendent that was effective. And so he's weighing all those options right now.
Mayor, I know that you have been outspoken, you've been also a source of support for the district and all the things that are taking shape. You said that you will continue to be that support, but describe more specifically how you will move forward in your involvement.
Well, importantly, both as your mayor and really the greater community, this decision is made. We can't look back or be frustrated. Now, there is an appeals process that the current board of trustees may decide to undertake. You'd have to talk to them about what their decision may be. But because our hands are tied, the decision is made, we're forward-thinking. The first most logical next step down is really, who is going to apply to be on that board of managers? If we're going to have a board of managers, we want it to be the very best individuals that are capable of serving in that capacity to work alongside our students and our teachers to make Fort Worth ISD the very best district in the state of Texas. So that will likely be where I have a lot of focus. The other piece is what I do every week is visit schools. Sometimes it's for my own personal sanity to get to sit with those kiddos and see what they're doing. It's a lot of fun, a good reprieve sometimes from city business. But I get a lot from that because I'm interacting so much with our students and our teachers and our families. And that gives me an understanding of how they're feeling, especially right now. I'm sure today's news really does hit hard in some ways, especially those campuses that have improved greatly. And they've seen that progress. They probably ask themselves, okay, was it just not enough? What else can I do? And that can be difficult as well.
Are you disappointed?
No, I'm not disappointed. I'm not surprised. And I have a lot of respect for Commissioner Morath. I've told a lot of groups this, in small and larger settings, teachers and parents alike that maybe don't know Commissioner Morath. He's an incredibly accomplished, intelligent individual that is leading education for the state of Texas. He may approach things differently than you or I might, and he may have a lens that's maybe statewide, but he does know what he's doing. And I think he's leading this effort because he believes it's the right thing for Fort Worth ISD. And he has a legal mandate, by the way, with the Texas Legislature as well. What I'm most hopeful about is that we can be an example of a community that focuses on the most important things, which is what I led with earlier, which is our students.
What's your advice for Morath as he goes through this process of appointing the board of managers and eventually the superintendent and the conservator?
My advice is, we're not Houston, we're not Alden ISD, we're not Dallas ISD, we're not Austin ISD, we are Fort Worth ISD. And that he, the best thing he can do is the Commissioner of Education in this process is to make sure he's listening to the city of Fort Worth. And I don't mean the city as an entity, I mean all of us as community members. And I think his board of managers has the potential to really reflect that. And he does speak with intention. I watched briefly a few interviews he gave this morning, and it seemed to be, he was careful with his words, he knew the gravity of the situation. I appreciated his candor and his directness with Dr. Molinar, with myself and others. He reached out to a lot of people yesterday in preparation for the news this morning. So if he could just keep pressing in that direction, I think he'll be in a good position. But that's the most important thing, is to recognize the individuality of our city.
What role has the city played in this successful transition? And I asked that because you said, you know, we don't want to look back, but it took many years to get to this point. And I just wonder, you know, as mayor and our city leaders, what role do you guys have to make sure students are succeeding in these spaces?
Yeah. You know, I was asked this question a few weeks ago, and actually it was more of a statement. The statement was, you've utilized a lot of your political capital on education, public education in Fort Worth. And the answer to the question was, why? And my response was simple, what else would I spend political capital on? These are our children, these are our students, these are the future leaders of this community. We are the fastest-growing community in the entire country, large city, 10th largest, we think, we spout off these accolades all the time. But we will no longer be a successful city if we don't care about every single child in every single classroom across the city of Fort Worth. The reality is, right now, not every single student, every single zip code in Fort Worth has access to a great education. And we should no longer think that's acceptable. So specifically, I've used the bully pulpit of this office, and it's not specific to me, it's the power of a mayor and a city and those alongside you to really ask for things to be different. And we've done that. Just over a year ago, we went to the school board and said, please take action to move things forward. And look what's happened in over a year. My support, both in education policy work in Austin, has been effective, and I know that for sure. But it's also just showing up and making sure I'm informed where needed, and I can follow along where things are going well, and importantly, taking action when our schools need action. And I think that has really proved to be the case over the last year.
I want to pick up on those accolades that you mentioned, and we do talk about Fort Worth growing so quickly. What do you think this does? I mean, people are looking to work here all the time, but does this provide a stain on Fort Worth's reputation?
I don't think it does. I mean, frankly, we've had some big economic development wins just in the last few months. And when you talk to CEOs or C-suite or board members that are looking at a community like Fort Worth, they will often point towards a healthy workforce and that pipeline that does exist here in the city. An incredibly high percentage of higher education graduates every single year across DFW. And we're also leaning into the truth. A lot of transparency has been lifted about where we are with the state of education, especially post-COVID. I mean, let's be honest, the reality we're facing in Fort Worth is not unique to other large urban areas across the country. But maybe the difference is that we are accepting, we're no longer accepting that that's our truth, we want things to look different. And that's true from early education all the way through post-secondary success into career success. And so while today feels like it might have that negative stain, we're focused on the positives as well, and really reflecting on how we got here, to your question about, you know, how long it took us to get to this point, and acting with a sense of urgency to make a difference for our students and their education.
Who do you think should be on the board of managers?
Who do I think should be on the board of managers? I think individuals that have an acumen for leadership, probably a cross-section of different industries. Importantly, reflective of the diversity of our community across every single zip code in the city of Fort Worth. And also a diversity of experience, right? This does not have to be, we don't want to monolith at all. I think you've got a pretty decent example when you research what they put in place in Houston, type of individuals that are on the Houston Board of Managers. And I would hope we get that same constituency here in Fort Worth. And I do know, just based on text messages I've received this morning, there's a lot of people that are interested in serving on board of managers that, oh, by the way, would never have an interest in running for school board. So maybe that also helps. If I may, Harrison, I'd have to add this too. I really want to thank our current board members for their volunteer service. It is incredibly hard to be in elected office, maybe even more difficult than ever has been for school board members across the country, especially post-COVID. And I have not talked to any of them directly this morning about how they're feeling, but I don't want this community to speak negatively of their service, right? I think many of them have made tremendous efforts to make positive change in a short period of time over the last year, working together. And that should be commended, and I think that's worth mentioning today.
What do you say to parents right now?
Day to day, you'll not see any difference right now. Make sure your kids are going to school, make sure they're focused, reading is a priority, listen to their teachers, be involved on campus, keep doing what you're doing. And over time, we owe them transparency, clear communication, and what the next steps look like. I think you're going to see the same thing from Dr. Molinar and her leadership. The sun still rose the same way today, and it'll do the same thing tomorrow. We're going to focus on our students. And as things start to kind of unpack, making sure we're communicating with all of our parents and teachers will be a priority for Fort Worth ISD.
You mentioned that Houston ISD has seen some good results, but are there any impacts of that that you're concerned about having to bear?
Well, Houston ISD is not an apples-to-apple example, partly because of the TEA ratings. There was that lawsuit that was prolonging the effort. So takeover was known, but then there was no action taken. It created a lot of chasm, a lot of political fighting that happened in Houston. I really don't anticipate that here for a variety of different reasons. So I'm hopeful that, to the question really about negativity, we need to stay positive for our students. I say this a lot, but I think it's worth repeating. The kids that are in first grade right now, they don't get to redo first grade, or eighth grade year, or senior year and high school graduation. We have to get this right for them. So while we're making significant change and transformation towards turnaround for our ISD, we also have to focus on who's there now. In Houston, the data shows the largest growth, positive growth you've seen across the state of any large urban district happened, and our largest district in Houston ISD, over a shorter period of time under this model of board of managers. So we're hopeful the same thing could happen here. But importantly, Dr. Molinar and the board have approved a lot of the changes that you saw in Houston ISD. So we have a head start that maybe could even give us even greater gains in a shorter period of time.
We're going to wrap up.
Anybody else?
Does the city have to change anything to protect its reputation with this takeover as far as itself to other cities of tourism or something?
That's a great question. Back to kind of positive messaging, that will continue to be a priority. And that's up to not just the district, of course, that's up to our Economic Development Partnership Group, the Chambers of Commerce, the city of Fort Worth. There are so many positive stories that I hope many of you will run with in the coming weeks about what is working in education and preparing our workforce for tomorrow. But we will have to combat some of that negativity that comes over. You know, candidly, I think there's been a lot of struggle with the word takeover. And I think that feels like a heavy word, which is why I led with, I don't consider this a takeover. Because ultimately, the leadership of the district will still remain in the hands of the city of Fort Worth and our board of managers. And I'm confident that we're going to put the right superintendent in place. Right now, my chips are on the table for Dr. Molinar. I know her personally, I consider her a friend and a great leader, but I also respect the process that Commissioner Morath will go through. But again, positive stories will be needed, especially to tell the good work that our students are doing across Fort Worth. Thank y'all, appreciate it.
All right, that is Fort Worth Mayor Mattie Parker saying that she's not disappointed and not surprised by the state takeover of the Fort Worth Independent School District. She says she also doesn't view it as a takeover because the people who are going to be leading the change are going to be people from Fort Worth, with the board of managers are going to be from Fort Worth, and superintendent. And she also feels that Dr. Molinar's leadership has really been moving the district in the right direction, and that Dr. Molinar deserves a chance to become the next superintendent of the Fort Worth Independent School District. She also says she has a lot of respect for Mike Morath, that she wants every child in the zip code, in every zip code in Fort Worth, to have access to a great education. And she feels that Morath wants the same thing, and therefore, the city of Fort Worth and the Fort Worth Independent School District are going to be moving in that direction. Now Superintendent Dr. Karen Molinar is taking questions from the district's administration building. Let's go ahead and hear from her.
Good morning, and thank you for coming out today. And as an effort of transparency, and that is always what I strive to be as a leader, is very transparent. We want to give you the opportunity today to ask any questions that I'm able to answer concerning the announcement today from TEA. So I'll open it up to questions.
Dr. Molinar, was it a mistake to close Forest Oak 6th grade knowing what you know today and ultimately who made that decision?
So it's not a mistake to close the former Glen Crest 6th and combine into Forest Oak. That was always our intention, as we are under the 1882 partnership with Texas Wesleyan. And part of our facility master planning is to not have six-grade centers as well. We like that vertical alignment for 6th, 7th, and 8th. So we definitely need to move in that direction. Closing a school is not the root cause, it's what's happening inside a school and what type of instructional delivery we're providing for our students.
Dr. Molinar, what feeling when you got the news?
Feeling, I got the news. I knew that a decision was coming. For me, it's like next steps, like how do I make sure our students continue getting the education they need, the daily instruction? And then how do I make sure also our parents know that we are going to take care of their students? And how do I keep our community together, as well as our internal staff? So for me, that's when I go into the hard work and really think about, how can I put out messages and make sure people feel we're moving forward and this is a transition?
To go amongst that, what reassurance can you give parents today about a child's future in Fort Worth ISD?
That's a wonderful question, I appreciate that. So we actually, I just completed a video and a letter that we have released to our staff and our parents. And our commitment is that we are here for kids. This, what the process we're going through right now is a very adult-centered on how to support our students and their academic success. But however, every single day is about their students, and I want to make sure our parents know that. I also had a Zoom meeting with all of our campus principals to reiterate, that's our focus, that will remain our focus, has been since I've taken over and will continue to be. But nothing changes. You know, we did have a couple of parents say, do I bring my child to school today? Yes. This is your school district, these are your schools, and I believe in public education.
Dr. Molinar, the conservator is going to have broad scope, starting very quickly while the current board is still in place. Can you talk to me about the process that you and the board are going to undertake in working with this conservator between now and when this new board takes over?
So I don't have details on the process. I was able to speak to the commissioner yesterday, and as things unfold and the timeline is a little bit more clear for me, as well as our board, then we'll work on that process. I respect his decision, I know he had to make a decision. And so whoever he names as a conservator, I look forward to working with them. We have great, wonderful initiatives that are aligned by TA, suggested by TA. So I have faith he will give a conservator to our district who also can help us implement and keep the momentum.
When I talked to him this morning, and I asked, clearly, he has said the board are nice people, but they have failed the students of Fort Worth for years upon years. And I said to him that you are their choice, you were the person who the board believed in. And I asked him, is the fact that you were their choice something that could potentially cloud his opinion of you? He said, possible. Knowing, assuming that you want this job, how do you, between now and whenever he makes the decision, let him know that, why you're the person, even though you're their person who, he doesn't necessarily assume you have the best of him.
So our commissioner is data-driven, and he's very easy to read with only that fact in mind. He's about data and results. And that's my job, is to get the results for our students, not for adults, but for our students. So I'm going to continue that work. And he will make that decision. And, you know, I'm happy they asked me to be the superintendent of this school district. And I have shown that we put initiatives in place, we have gotten results, there's still a long way to go. But that's my work, and I'll continue to do that work.
But Dr. Molinar, in the letter today, she said that the trustees are reviewing all clinical options. Can you clarify what that means?
Our trustees have the option, which would have to be decided together as a board and take board action to appeal. And so that is on our board to make those decisions and follow that.
Do you have any feeling for what they're going to do?
I don't at this time. You know, they would need to meet and have that discussion, and I've just not been a part of that at this time.
Do you think there's anything the district could have done to improve weakness?
There's always things we could have done. When you see a school that is not performing and have a rating that's unacceptable, and really, that's what you're seeing us put in place that we announced as a team last month, with resource campuses and doing reapply, and then also putting structures in place. And that should have been done. That should have been done years ago. No campus should be five years or more unacceptable right now.
How long will the change take place?
I'm not sure how long the transition will take. His letter does state sometime this spring of 2026, or the beginning of 2026. So I would say the transition and the timeline could be anywhere from four to six months.
And once it does, is it indefinite, how long their periods are?
He has, actually, there's, in our community letter that will go out later today, it really shares the process that Houston followed. And there's a lot of options, that's a two- to four-year or longer span that a state takeover can stay in place.
She'll take two more questions, and then it's around.
Commissioner Morath said he's impressed with your leadership, but he also said the district now needs a superintendent who's a master technician. How do you interpret that comment?
I was born to be educator, and that's been my only profession, my only job. I went to college to be a teacher, to teach children to read. I've had the opportunity to work my way through the system in many different roles. And what I've put in place in the short time that I have led this district, I've gotten results.
Dr. Molinar, what is your message on not only leading Fort Worth ISD through this transition, but what's going to be on the other side?
Repeat that one more time for me.
What would your message be, not only for families and students, but your staff, on how you plan to lead through this transition and what you're hopeful for on the other side?
Our plan is to continue our urgency and to continue to be very transparent that if a student is not on grade level, it's not okay. But to implement with high-quality instructional materials with fidelity every single day and have instruction going on in those classrooms, that comes with accountability. And we have to hold people accountable. If you do not want to implement the instructional framework we have in place and utilize our instructional material that is research-proven for kids and state board of education adopted, then this is probably not the district for you to be in. So our message is to our parents is like, we have the things in place for your child. Bring them to school every single day, support the schools, engage with us, hold us accountable as we hold everyone else accountable around the framework to support their children.
Thank y'all for being here today. We appreciate your visit, and if you have any follow-up questions, please feel free to reach out to us.
Okay, that was Superintendent Dr. Karen Molinar talking about the state takeover of the Fort Worth Independent School District, calling this a transition, and also saying that she knew this decision was coming. And she talked a great deal about what she expects to continue educating students and giving them the best possible education they can during this transition. Now, the Fort Worth ISD Board of Trustees also sent out a statement saying, in part, "The board respects the commissioner's commitment to student success and accountability. It's disappointed by the decision and hopes the matter will be reconsidered." Board President Roxanne Martinez said, "Over the past year, our board and administration have worked tirelessly to strengthen instruction and accelerate student outcomes. Our elected board is in the best position to drive the sustainable improvements the commissioner seeks, with measurable progress already underway." Again, as we've been telling you, big changes are coming for Fort Worth ISD after the state announced they will be taking over Fort Worth ISD after a now-closed campus rated F five years in a row. Those changes are not going to be immediate, though. Commissioner Morath will interview and appoint a board of managers to replace the elected school board. There will also be a nationwide search for a superintendent. Right now, he says Dr. Karen Molinar remains superintendent, and she will have to reapply and re-interview if she wants the job. Now, our coverage continues on the stream throughout the day, and continuing in just a moment. And we will have more on this on air with CBS News Texas at 4 o'clock. Good afternoon, I'm Karen Borda on the CBS News Texas stream. We have just finished hearing from Fort Worth ISD Superintendent Dr. Karen Molinar and Fort Worth Mayor Mattie Parker after this morning's announcement from the TEA that they're going to be replacing Fort Worth ISD school board and the superintendent. And we do expect at any moment to hear from Board President Roxanne Martinez. Now, our Lacey Beasley has been covering this. We've been talking about a potential takeover for a few months now. She's been covering this story for us from the beginning, so let's send things over to her. Lacey, you are listening in to the mayor's statement. What was your take on everything she had to say? It sounded to me like she had kind of an upbeat perception.
She definitely did, Karen. And, you know, Mayor Parker, she, in a rare move, has really been involved with Fort Worth ISD. And that's not common for a mayor. But she said in this press conference, why wouldn't she be involved? These are the future kids that are going to be, you know, leading our nation, they're going to be the future kids in our workforce, and she wants to invest in education. One of the big takeaways, or some of the big takeaways I got away from what she was just saying is, for one, she has talked to Dr. Molinar this morning. She said they were on the phone. Dr. Molinar may be feeling overwhelmed this morning, but Mayor Parker has confidence in her. And she says that she is proud of the work that she's done so far stepping into the superintendent role, which has been less than a year, keep in mind. So Mayor Parker is proud of Dr. Molinar. She says that she's proud of the progress that Fort Worth ISD has made so far, especially teachers in the classroom, on the front lines, per se, teaching these students. And it's a tough job. She said she's proud of this district's improvement so far. However, there are still challenges. Right now, Fort Worth ISD does still have 20 schools that are rated F. And that, as Dr. Molinar was saying, she says that's unacceptable. There's no reason for any school to be rated F. And that's why the TEA has decided to step in with this takeover. Now, let me explain what this takeover is and isn't. What this takeover means is that the Texas Education Agency will come in and they will replace this elected school board with an appointed board of managers. And that board of managers will then be in charge of district operations, not the TEA. The TEA will not be in charge. They're appointing a board of managers that will be in charge. So that is coming in the next few months. Now, I talked to Commissioner Mike Morath earlier today on a Zoom call. He says those changes are not immediate. For now, within Fort Worth ISD, whether you're a teacher, a parent, a student, he says for now, you won't feel a difference. Still show up to school, still keep doing what you're doing. The change will come in the next few months as he goes through this interview process, this application process, to appoint a new board of managers. And he says he wants to keep it about the same number as the school board. So that's about nine people, he says, that could fill these positions. And that application is live right now on the TEA's website. Now, I asked Commissioner Morath, what qualifications are you looking for? Who can apply for this? And he... And he didn't give specific qualifications, but what he is looking for are people who are local to Fort Worth, who are invested in education. Apply and he will interview and he will appoint who steps into this new role. In the meantime, the school board stays as is, this elected school board. And also in the meantime, Dr. Karen Molinar remains superintendent. Now, they are beginning a nationwide search for a new superintendent. That's according to Commissioner Mike Morath. That process will take months. And that doesn't totally eliminate Dr. Molinar either. If she wants to continue in this position, she'll have to reapply and reinterview for the superintendent role. Commissioner Morath says those decisions won't be made until the spring. So we're still looking at five, six months down the road from now until a final decision could be made. Karen.
You know, and in terms of the board of managers, I was interested to hear the mayor talking about what she expected, that there were people from, that they're probably going to be looking for people of all different backgrounds and to basically reflect the different zip codes around Fort Worth. And she said that she's already heard from a lot of people today via text, people saying that they would love to step into that role, but that something, but being on the school board is something they would never do.
Yeah, that's a really good point to bring up too, Karen. The mayor is definitely looking for the best of the best to be this next board of managers. She said that's her message to Commissioner Morath is listen to the people of Fort Worth, listen to what they want, listen to what their goals are, and adhere to that when he's appointing this board of managers. And yes, she wants people of diverse zip codes that covers all portions of Fort Worth, not just select portions. She's looking for people who are local, who are passionate about this city. She's looking for people who care about education, from diverse experiences, diverse backgrounds. She's looking for all these characteristics. And she even pointed out in this press conference that she wants to tell Commissioner Morath, we're not Houston ISD. She says, we are Fort Worth ISD. We're not Dallas ISD, we're not Austin ISD. We are Fort Worth ISD. We have certain requirements that we want of our board of managers. Being local is a huge point, you know, being plugged into this community, being invested in this community. There's a lot of different avenues to go about picking a board of managers. She just really wants Commissioner Morath to hone in on the heart of Fort Worth.
You know, in talking about the Houston ISD, she said that Fort Worth has already made some of the changes that it took Houston a while to make. So she feels like maybe they're already a little bit ahead of the game and that might help them. Because as we mentioned earlier, they just extended the takeover, if you will, of Houston ISD by a couple of years. Started in 2023. They just announced in June that it was going to extend to 2027. And she feels like maybe Fort Worth already has a leg up because they were already making positive changes in the last year that Dr. Molinar has been superintendent.
Yeah, that's right. I asked Commissioner Morath, I was like, how long of a timeline are we thinking here? Because yes, Houston ISD just extended their time with their board of managers. Commissioner Morath says the TEA's goal is to have this board of managers in and out as quickly as possible. He says whether that's one year, two years, three years. He didn't give a definitive answer on how long this board of managers will be here, but he does want a quick turnaround to once again increase those 20 failing campuses and get them at grade level again. There's been a huge focus within Fort Worth ISD on getting students reading and writing at grade level. I've covered this extensively over the past few months. There's also been a big push from the city of Fort Worth, which is kind of what I was going back to earlier. Mayor Mattie Parker has really put her hand in the pot with education. I know over the summer, there's been a few literacy groups that have popped up created by the city of Fort Worth. One of them is called Literacy Roundup. I just did a story with them. And that specific advocacy group focused on screening children for the possibility of dyslexia. There's programs like this that are coming into place to help boost student outcomes. And really, it's going to take teachers being on those front lines, like I said, in the classroom, paying attention to students. And that's what Commissioner Morath was saying, is he wants to see more of. He wants to see more hands-on interaction between teachers and students when it comes to any confusion in the classroom, any difficulties in the classroom, more one-on-one interaction to boost these test scores. Karen.
Now, Lacey, you have been very involved in all of our education stories, really, over the last many months now. There are some critics of the announcement of the takeover, saying that they believe that perhaps a lot of the really seasoned teachers that you want to see in these school districts are going to leave to go to other districts, maybe better paying districts, neighboring school districts that don't have these issues right now. And that in the long term is going to end up hurting the district. Have you heard anything? What have you heard from teachers perhaps as to what they might be thinking about all of this?
I think this whole takeover sounds scary. It sounds daunting, especially if you haven't been tracking it from the weeds, kind of how I've been bringing us coverage for the past few months about this. It sounds scary. I have heard from parents that they did not want this takeover to happen. There are advocacy groups that are popping up around Fort Worth that are parent focused, and they are focused on ending this takeover. They're trying to divert it. Now that the takeover is happening, I've been texting with some parents, and they're disappointed. They are disappointed because it's scary and it's daunting. And what happens to our teachers? What happens to curriculum? What happens to X, Y, and Z? Teachers specifically, I haven't heard from, Karen. I have to go through the school board or the district to be in contact with teachers. I have heard a lot more from parents who are that middle man for me, from the classroom to here. And they are telling me that they are disappointed. However, they do want the best for their students. And as does the TEA, they want the best for Fort Worth ISD. Whether this is the outcome that people wanted or not, the goal is to boost these test scores. The goal is to get these F-rated campuses up to a D, C, B. An A is the goal. That may take years to turn this ship around, but that's the goal with this. There are skeptics. I mean, I brought up earlier about Houston ISD. Houston ISD, from the parents that I've talked to within Fort Worth ISD, their hesitancy with the Houston ISD takeover is they've seen a lot of focus on STAR testing. STAR tests only test core subjects. STAR test does not test any extracurriculars or any band, orchestra, arts, photography. There are other classes that students take during the school day that students are excelling at. However, it's not being measured in these school ratings. It's not being measured in the STAR test scores. And that's where parents are a little bit wary. They don't want there to be too much of a focus on STAR testing without also focusing on all these other areas where students are excelling. So that's some of the backlash, that's some of the pushback when it comes to this takeover is, is there going to be too much of a focus on STAR testing? And that's something that will work out in the next coming months and figure that out as it comes, Karen.
But you know, Lacey, you know, brings up the question, when you talk about these 20 campuses that have F ratings, what causes that F rating? It's not because they're looking at the band and the choir and photography classes, right? They're looking at those core STAR test subjects. Is that correct?
Right. They're looking at core subjects. And depending on the grade, that's reading, literacy, history, science. And when you get into those older grades, there's a little bit of algebra mixed in there. Just depends on what grade you're in. That is what the TEA is looking at. Now, not to go off on too much of a tangent, the STAR test format will be changing. I mean, there was a bill that was passed this session that will change the format. However, we're looking at the current format as it is now, and it's a year-end test, one day at the end of the year. There was a lot of critics over the format of the STAR test because it adds a lot of pressure, they say, to students for this one-year, one-day, high-stakes test. So you're getting the outcome of these students based on one day. And that's where a lot of teachers say, that's where a lot of parents say, results can be skewed because they feel test anxiety or they feel pressure on this day. Teachers also feel pressure on this day. And it turns a school into a testing center. So there's a lot of mixed feelings on how accurate the STAR test is when it comes to how students are taking the test, because like I said, there's such a high stakes factor to it. But yes, that's how these ratings come about, is through STAR testing. And are they meeting grade level? Are they below grade level? Are they mastering grade level? There's a few different categories into it also. We can get really into the weeds with all the different categories that go into a A through F rating. But basically, yes, the bottom line is it comes down to STAR test scores.
And you were talking about the parents, the parents of some of these kids who might be in some of these, you know, ranked schools. What is it that they are saying? Are they concerned about this or is this something that they think needs to happen?
Yeah, I think an F-rated school definitely doesn't reflect well on the district. It doesn't reflect well of that school. However, when I have been doing interviews, talking to lower-rated districts and even higher-rated districts, yes, there is the rating. However, a lot of districts don't put too much weight into the ratings. Even A-rated districts I've talked to say, every day we're making strides. Every day we're making improvements, whether or not we have a rating looming over our heads or not. So these F-rated campuses, these D-rated campuses, they're doing all they can. A lot of it does come down to, you know, maybe there is a socioeconomic factor that falls into this. Maybe there is a, you know, second language emerging, a second language factor that could be falling into this. There's a lot of different factors that fall into how students are scoring within these STAR test scores. So it's, I just did an interview with one district over on the Dallas side of town, and they were saying when you put a rating on a district, they believe it almost oversimplifies things. It slaps a rating on a district without going into the nitty-gritty of the layers of what goes into it. And that's a lot of information that can be found on the TEA's website when it comes to how these ratings are broken down. But overarching, the TEA created these ratings to allow parents to have a better idea of how schools are performing. These A through F ratings are very similar to a student's report card. As a student receives a report card, A, B, C, D, or F, that's what these ratings are for districts and individual campuses. So it's a great comparison factor for parents to see how their students are performing and to see how their schools are rated. However, if they really want to get into the nitty-gritty, it comes down to, you know, reaching out to your teachers, reaching out to your principals, reaching out to your school leaders and seeing, hey, my student may be in an F-rated campus. What's going on? How can I help? And a big factor too, that districts are saying is, the best way parents can help is to get their students to class every day. Get them to class on time every day because chronic absenteeism also falls into this too. If students aren't in class, they aren't learning, therefore, they're not scoring well. So the biggest thing parents can do is get their kids to class, even within Fort Worth ISD with this takeover now official. Dr. Molinar and Mayor Parker both say, routine is normal. Get your students to class every day.
Yeah, learning must be the priority for families. All right. Lacey, thank you very much. We really appreciate that deep dive and your particular insight into what is going on here. Thank you so much. Now, we are going to take a quick break. We are expecting to hear from Board President Roxanne Martinez. She's the school board president for Fort Worth ISD. There we go. Here's a picture from Administration Headquarters. Again, we're going to take a quick break and we'll be back in just a moment. We want to take a live look from Fort Worth ISD headquarters, where we are expecting to hear, here we go, right now, Roxanne Martinez. She is the school board president for the Fort Worth Independent School District. She is going to give a speech about the state takeover of the district that was announced this morning. Let's go ahead and listen in.
Good morning or afternoon. Okay. Yeah. Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Good afternoon. As you all know, my name is Roxanne Martinez, president of the Board of Trustees for Fort ISD. I wanted to first inform you that I will be reading a statement today, but I won't be able to answer any questions. Do have a little bit more than the statement that has been issued. First and foremost, the board wants to express our gratitude and thank every Fort Worth ISD teacher, principal, counselor, bus driver, custodian, school nutrition worker, every single staff member who shows up each and every day for our students. Your commitment, care, and resilience have carried this district through some of the most challenging years in public education. From the pandemic to recovery and now through a period of uncertainty, the board is deeply grateful for the work that each of you do. And the progress that our district has made from higher student achievement to stronger schools is because of you. The news of state intervention is difficult, but please know that our mission and our students remain at the center of everything we do. The board's goal is to ensure that your work and our students' success is not overshadowed by politics, but instead lift up the proof that Fort Worth ISD is indeed stronger together. The heart of Fort Worth ISD can be found in every classroom, in every hallway, in every caring adult who shows up for our kids each and every day. That will keep our district moving forward. The Fort Worth ISD Board of Trustees acknowledges the Texas Education Agency Commissioner's decision regarding the district's governance. While the board respects the commissioner's commitment to student success and accountability, it is disappointed by the decision and we hope the matter will be reconsidered. The board firmly believes that local elected leadership is best positioned to sustain Fort Worth ISD's progress and continue improving outcomes for every student in the district. Over the past year, our board and administration have worked tirelessly to strengthen instruction and accelerate student outcomes. Our elected board is in the best position to drive the sustainable improvements that the commissioner seeks with measurable progress already underway. We respectfully ask him to reconsider this decision as we continue partnering with families, educators, and state leaders to keep this momentum going for every Fort Worth ISD student. Measurable gains in student achievement, accountability, and strategic alignment demonstrate that Fort Worth ISD is on the right path. Just some of the student outcomes that we've highlighted include instructional overhaul and funding realignment. Trustees approved a district-wide redesign that redirected $22.7 million into literacy and math initiatives, restructured key roles, and placed more expert teachers directly in front of our students in our classrooms. We've achieved, campuses have earned TEA accountability distinctions that increased from 122 campuses in 2024 and 2025, and F-rated campuses decreased by more than half year over year. The district achieved improvements across nearly all third through eighth star assessments, reflecting stronger instruction and targeted support. And the district's strategic plan prioritizes academic excellence, family engagement, effective staff, and operational efficiency, with student outcomes guiding every decision and investment that we've made. The Fort Worth ISD Board of Trustees is reviewing the commissioner's decision. The Fort Worth ISD Board of Trustees is reviewing the Commissioner's decision and exploring all available options. The board remains committed to ensuring that every action serves the best interests of students and supports continued academic growth, accountability, and community trust. That's all we have at the current moment. As we have more information on next steps, we will be sharing those out through the district. So thank you.
You told you nice people have failed kids for years. That's what he said. Can you share some of that in Spanish, please?
I don't feel comfortable doing the interview in Spanish, but thank you. That's all we have for today. That's all we have for today. Thank you.
All right. And that is Board President Roxanne Martinez, basically expressing gratitude to everyone, she says, who has shown up daily for the students. She says news of the state's decision to intervene is difficult, but they say their mission to move the district forward has not changed at all. And again, expressed their disappointment with the decision and respectfully asking the Commissioner to reconsider. All right, now, our coverage does continue on the stream throughout the day and on air, beginning with CBS News Texas at 4:00. We want to thank you for watching and we'll see you later. Good morning. Thank you for joining us for CBS News Texas at 11:00. I'm Karen Borda. We begin with breaking news. The state is taking over Fort Worth ISD. The move comes after one now-closed campus rated F five years in a row, triggering a state law that allows the state to intervene. Our Lacey Beasley has been following this story for months and she joins us now live. So Lacey, what can you tell us about this?
Hey, Karen, this decision by the TEA definitely comes as a gut punch to Fort Worth ISD. I'm in City Hall right now in Fort Worth, and we are awaiting Mayor Mattie Parker in the next 30 minutes. She should be giving comment to her reaction. And she's also played a really pivotal role in this because she's worked hand-in-hand with Dr. Karen Molinar, trying to improve student outcomes within Fort Worth ISD. Just after nine o'clock, I hopped off a Zoom call with Commissioner Mike Marath. He says that Fort Worth ISD is still facing challenges and they need help.
Our goal is to get in and get out as quickly as possible, but we want that mission to be accomplished. We want the district to have changed for the better for kids so that there is no more multi-year academically unacceptable campuses. It could be one year, two years, three years. But the goal is to make that change and make it happen as quickly as possible, make the change so it leads to lasting gains for students. And when we reach that milestone, then we'll start the process of reverting back to the elected Board of Trustees.
Now, Commissioner Marath says change does not start yet. First, he will interview and appoint a board of managers to replace the elected school board. Applications are live on the TEA's website, and he says he's looking for people local to Fort Worth to fill these positions. He is also on a nationwide search for a superintendent. Right now, he says Dr. Karen Molinar remains superintendent. However, she will have to reapply and re-interview if she chooses. Now, in a statement, Fort Worth ISD Board President says, quote, "Our elected board is in the best position to drive the sustainable improvements the Commissioner seeks with measurable progress already underway. We respectfully ask him to reconsider his decision as we continue partnering with families, educators, and state leaders to keep this momentum going for every Fort Worth ISD student." Now, once again, Mayor Parker has played a really pivotal role in this, working so closely with Dr. Molinar to improve those student outcomes, especially when it comes to getting students reading and writing at grade level. I also know the city has created literacy groups over the summer to help improve those student outcomes. Once again, we will be hearing from her in the next 30 minutes. Karen.
All right, and we will be there for that, Lacey. Thank you very much. Now, with more than 70,000 students and nearly 10,000 school district employees impacted by today's announcement, the community has questions. Our Trevor Sahaki continues our live team coverage. So Trevor, what are parents telling you?
Well, Karen, reaction has been swift to this announcement, especially since many people have been preparing and anticipating something like this would happen ever since those STAR tests were released. Many of the people that I have been speaking with say they're against the state takeover, and they believe that local leaders can take care of local children and education best. They say Fort Worth ISD ought to be given more resources, not a whole new set of managers. Both the state Board of Education member Tiffany Clark, who represents the majority of the district, and some Fort Worth parents agree. The district is showing signs of improvement and needs more time. They argue Superintendent Molinar has not been in the position long enough to get the process, to get the progress going.
If we're saying that they're still not doing well, then how can we, as the state then, give them more resources instead of bringing in people to try to counter the issue? That's not helping.
A holistic approach to children rather than a hyper-focus on STAR results is what we need, and we need quality teachers, veteran teachers, to stick around to make sure that we can turn around our district.
And there's also concern over the privatization of Fort Worth schools. The worry is that the state will take the best-performing high schools and turn them into charter schools, which means less money for the district to improve. But that's something that Commissioner Marath did not address today. Live in Fort Worth, Trevor Sahaki, CBS News, Texas.
Trevor, thank you very much. Now, this is going to have a huge impact on teachers when it does take effect in the spring. Moments after the takeover announcement, our Madison Sawyer spoke with United Educators Association Executive Director Stephen Poole, who gave us some context about how all of this is going to play out in schools.
It's a gut punch for the district. Even yesterday, when news started leaking out, teachers were reaching out to me constantly all night, all this morning, worried about the future of their schools, their students, and themselves. So it's one thing to make an announcement down in Austin and drop this bomb on Fort Worth ISD with no clear vision of the future, when all of us are left here in Fort Worth to pick up the pieces and muddle through. He says he wants the district to operate as it always has been until he appoints the managers. That's impossible. The implications of a takeover of Fort Worth ISD is just rippling all through the district.
You mentioned the gut punch. This is a gut punch that Houston ISD has felt too. They went through something similar back in 2023, are still going through that process. So what did you hear from educators associated with that takeover back in 2023 and even still currently?
The very first time educators could get out of Houston ISD, they did. They had tremendous turnover. So we're expecting that in Fort Worth ISD. The quality teachers and employees that Fort Worth would want to retain are going to look elsewhere. And the surrounding districts, the dozens of districts surrounding Fort Worth ISD is going to be a benefit of all of the excellent teachers and employees in Fort Worth ISD.
Why is that? What does cause them to leave and want to go elsewhere?
It's the unknown, what the future may hold for them. And if they want to work in that kind of environment. Houston is very rigid in what they expect of the teachers, and there's not a lot of autonomy. So the high-quality teachers that know how to teach in Fort Worth may not want to work into that system. So what we saw in Houston where the veteran teachers were leaving will happen in Fort Worth.
One other question for you. I mean, when it comes to what this says about how the Texas education system as a whole works, what is your takeaway? I mean, we've seen Houston ISD, we've seen now Fort Worth ISD, two of the largest districts in the state. What does this say to you about the sense of and the direction of the TEA?
Yeah. The Commissioner wants to point to reading scores, but the reading scores, there is a problem in Fort Worth, no doubt. But this is a systemic problem all across the state and the nation, reading at grade level. So it's not unique to Fort Worth. But as far as the direction of TEA, it's interesting that he makes this announcement from his ivory tower in Austin, not here in Fort Worth, facing the parents, the citizens, and the teachers of Fort Worth. So we're going to see a centralized power out of Austin and take away local control, Houston, Fort Worth, Lake Worth, other districts under the threat of takeover.
The TEA has entered